Okay, good morning. Before I start calling the meeting to order, I wanted to give just a little bit of explanation. According to GS 153A 39, "On the first Monday in December of each even-numbered year and the first regular meeting in December of each odd-numbered year, the Board of Commissioners shall choose one of its members as chairman for the ensuing year." This may be somewhat different than past practice, but this is the statute, and that is why we're doing this today. And with that being said, I will, at this time, go ahead and call the meeting to order. And if you will, please stand, and we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And at this time, we will call on our chaplain, Reverend Patrick Warmick, to come and give us our invocation. Thank you.
May we pray. Gracious God, our Father, we praise you and thank you for this beautiful day, for the opportunity to meet together here as citizens, as commissioners. Lord, we pray that you'll bless these who govern us in the position of county commissioner, that each may be given wisdom from you to discern matters well and wisely, and, Lord, that all of us may be easily governed. May you grant to this county your blessing. We pray for protection and prosperity. And we pray, dear Father, that we may demonstrate love for one another. We thank you, we ask your blessing, and we pray in your name. Amen.
Okay, the first item of business is the election of chair and vice-chair of the Board of Commissioners. So the chair will now entertain motions for the position of chairman of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to nominate for chairman Jay Debbie Kirk Capatrit III. And we appreciate the outstanding job he's done in the past, and I know that will continue. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other motions? Seeing none is nominated by acclamation. We will vote, however, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, and with that, my job is finished as far as this part goes, and I turn it over to our chair.
All right, and the next order is to take nominations for vice-chair. Do I hear any nominations there?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to nominate Commissioner Upton for the vice-chair position.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any other nominations? All right, hearing none, I'll take that vote by acclamation, but I'd have a vote, that motion. Is there a... All in favor of Bill Upton serving as vice-chair of the county commission, indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, so, Bill, your vice-chair.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we'll move to the public comment session. And I don't have anyone who's asked to come forward this morning for public comment. Would anyone like to come forward this morning? Okay. If not, we'll move to constituent concerns. Let's see, Brandon?
No.
Have any? Bill?
I don't. I've had a couple this morning, and Joel and I have discussed that already, but the other thing that I'd like to take a moment to mention, you know, this past weekend, we had an event in Haywood County that I was aware of, but really hadn't thought too much about it, and that was the Balsam Range Art of Music. Serving on the TDA, you know, we had our meeting last week, and Buddy Melton was there and was talking about his vision and what he wanted to do with that event. And, you know, I, as most all of us, it's a busy time of the year, and I knew it was this weekend, but I hadn't really given it much thought, but after I heard him talk about it and everything on Wednesday, I decided on Friday that I was going to attend that thing. And I can assure you that that was probably one of the most outstanding musical events that probably I have been to, as far as, you know, even if you were not a bluegrass fan. I mean, they had some of the best musicians perform, and, you know, I already had plans to be out of town for Saturday evening, and I wish that I had been able to stay in town, because you just do not see the quality of musicians that they had in Haywood County for this weekend. I mean, it was something like watching the Grand Ole Opry on TV or, you know, the Bluegrass Music Awards. They had people that won, you know, the banjo player of the year, the fiddle player had won, they had Brian Sutton, who happens to be my relative guitar player of the year for many years down in Nashville, along with Mike Snyder from Hee-Haw Fame, and then they also, on Saturday night, was packed, too. Now, they're trying to continue this thing and make it a huge event for Haywood County, and the plans are to try to do two weekends back-to-back and have the week of in-between as workshops and everything else. And I want to... I was amazed at what I saw Friday night, and I wanted to bring that to the public's attention, because I will be waiting to buy tickets next year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike. I don't have any constituent concerns either. I know we've got the parade tonight, the Waynesville Parade tonight, and Thursday, we've got the Canton Parade, so this probably won't be on the air for tonight, but at least for the Canton Parade on Thursday. Next, we've got administrative agency reports. We've got the annual audit report from Gold Killian CPA Group, Travis Kiefer. Their audit manager is here this morning to give the presentation. Morning, Mr. Kiefer.
Good morning. Yeah. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. This was our first year serving as your auditor, and we certainly appreciate the opportunity. Special thanks to Julie and the staff in the finance department, as well as Stony and the staff at DSS for their hard work and cooperation in completing the audit. The first year having a new auditor always presents some unique challenges, different personalities. We request different things than have previously been requested. They give us previous different things than what we're used to getting from other clients, so it's always a learning curve for both. And the county staff exhibited a tremendous amount of professionalism and integrity in completing the audit, so I just wanted to brag on them for a minute. My presentation's going to be brief, and it'll mostly cover the four audit reports that we issue within the CAFER. And then I'll also cover the board communication letter that we issued, which I think everyone has in their agenda packet, and I'll also touch on a couple of key financial highlights. As far as the audit opinions that we issue, these are all within the CAFER. The first opinion is near the front, and it covers the financial statements and the disclosures. This report is what everyone thinks of when they think of a financial audit, and it's similar to the report that would have been issued to a private sector business or to a nonprofit. We issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements, which means that we believe the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects and accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. That's what everybody wants to hear on that one, clean opinion. The other three reports are all in the back of the CAFER in what's called the compliance section, and these are all specific to governmental accounting and as required by governmental auditing and reporting standards. The first of those three is a report on internal control over financial reporting. It's also known as a yellow book opinion or a governmental audit opinion. This communicates, as part of your audit, we reviewed the internal controls over financial reporting, only to the extent necessary to perform our audit of the financial statements. It was not a full internal control audit. Last two reports that are in the compliance section, they're both on compliance requirements that are applicable to each major federal and state program and internal control over that compliance. This deals primarily with federal and state funding received at the county level through direct funding to the county to administer social service-type programs or by direct benefit payments made to citizens that are deemed eligible to receive the benefits. The largest federal program in this county, like all counties in North Carolina, is Medicaid. Haywood County received approximately $108 million in federal and state money that flowed into the county for purposes of providing social service benefits to citizens. Out of that $108 million, approximately $95 million of it's related to Medicaid, so that's where we spend the majority of our time on the audit. We did have a couple of internal control and compliance findings related to the Medicaid program. One of these dealt with the eligibility documentation in Medicaid and was a repeat finding from last year. We selected 123 cases out of a little more than 8,000 total cases the county dealt with during FY '17 and reviewed them for correct documentation and eligibility determination. Three of these cases had documentation errors. These were... It's important to note, these are only documentation errors. We did not come across any instances where someone had been deemed eligible for benefits that shouldn't have been or vice versa. We also had a finding related to the second-party review process over Medicaid. The county has a process in place for supervisors to review Medicaid cases that are processed by the caseworkers, and we found that at times, this review either didn't catch errors in documentation, or it did catch errors, but those errors weren't corrected. This happened in five out of 23 cases we looked at. And it's, once again, important to note that none of these five cases that had errors resulted in an improper eligibility determination. And we believe the first finding related to the documentation errors that I mentioned was a repeat from last year. The county has implemented its corrective action plan from last year's audit, and we feel they've done that appropriately. They didn't receive that finding in last year's audit until midway through FY '17, so a lot of the findings that we found are things that happened prior to the audit report being delivered last year. So we feel like they've implemented the corrective action plan from last year. They have a sufficient corrective action plan for both findings this year, and we believe if they implement that, that these findings should go away next year as well. We hope you'll read through the CAFER. It's only about 190 pages long, so if you have a chance, take a look at it. Let us know if you have any questions on it. The second document that we issued, this part of your agenda packet, is our required auditor communications. It communicates certain information about our responsibilities as auditors and also the scope of our audit. A couple of highlights from that: There were no new accounting policies that were adopted, and the application of current policies did not change for FY '17. And we also noted no transactions entered into by the county for which there's a lack of authoritative accounting guidance, and based on our audit, it appears that all significant transactions have been recorded in the proper accounting period. Also, certain elements of your financial statements are always subject to estimates. Some of the more sensitive estimates that affect your financial statements would be depreciation methods and the useful lives of assets, allowances for uncollectible receivables, which are based on estimates of collectibility that come from management, and actuarial estimates that are used to estimate liabilities arising from the various benefit plans that the town participates in, such as the local government employees' retirement system, the law enforcement officer's special separation allowance, and the registered deeds pension fund. One big change for next year, beginning in FY '18, the county will also be required to report the full actuarially determined value of the liability for providing retiree health benefits. So starting next year, that number will show up on the full accrual government-wide balance sheet, statement of net position, and it'll probably, in terms of liabilities, be the biggest number you all have on there, so just be thinking about that.
If that's important, can you explain that to where we understand it?
Yeah, sure. Basically, the county has a plan that provides health insurance benefits for retirees.
Correct.
Right now, there's some disclosures in the financial statements that talk about that obligation, but it's that full actuarially determined liability is not on the financial statements at this point. So sometime in the next year, Julie will hire an actuary, they'll send the data over about the plan. The actuary will say, based on the number of participants, their ages, all the things that go into actuarial calculations, they'll say, as of right now, we think the county's going to owe X amount of dollars going forward, and that number actually has to be booked as a liability.
Okay, so the estimated cost of the insurance?
Exactly.
Based on how we insure?
Over the next, you know, 25, 30 years, whatever the actuary goes out with. It's not a check that'll have to be written at any one time, of course. It'll be paid as the benefits come due, and it's always subject to people living longer or dying sooner, all of that stuff, but it will show up in the financial statements, which will have a pretty big impact on the way the first two statements look. So it will change things a little bit. We also, in this report, had one recommendation that we made that we feel didn't rise to the level of being a finding, but we did think it was worth mentioning. Caseworkers at DSS often have to keep records of which programs and cases that they work on throughout the day in order to facilitate reimbursement requests to the state, and we noted that approximately 10% of the time, the documentation maintained at DSS didn't sufficiently support the reimbursement request, and we've communicated this to them, and they've, I believe, implemented or are in the process of implementing the process to take care of this also. Just a couple of financial highlights. These come out of the audited numbers. The first chart up here shows a breakdown of the county's key revenue sources in the general fund. This looks really similar to a lot of counties, and the property taxes are your biggest number. That makes up, in your case, about 53% of your revenue, and property tax in FY '17 came in at about $43.2 million, and that was an increase of a little over $1 million or 2% from FY '16. Local option sales tax was your second biggest. You had almost $14 million in that, and that was an increase of about $400,000 or 3% over last year. And restricted intergovernmental revenues had an increase of $1.6 million or 12%, and that's primarily federal and state grant funding is what's made up of that. On the expenditure side, like most other counties, your three biggest expenditures are education, public safety, and human services. That's probably true in 100 out of 100 counties in the state. And you can see there the breakdown for each one of those expenses. Intergovernmental education was $18.3 million in expense. That was an increase of about $750,000 or 4% over last year. Public safety, you spent $15.5 million, which was an increase of about $700,000 over last year. And for human services, which is primarily DSS, you spent $4.47 million, which was actually a decrease of $400,000 over last year. Other expenditures include general government, cultural and recreation, debt service, and economic and physical development. This next graph shows a trend of the total fund balance in the general fund, as well as the fund balance available for appropriation. And you can see those numbers are all trending upwards. The fund balance available is a statutory calculation that the LGC uses to measure the amount of fund balance you have available to appropriate in your next budget. It's also used to measure the financial health of the unit and the ability for it to meet its ongoing obligations. And I know the available fund balance jumped up a good bit from FY '16 to '17. Part of that's based on operating results, and part of it's also based on the restricted amount of education money that's there that didn't all get spent in FY '17. And this final graph shows, or I'm sorry, next to the last graph, shows the fund balance available for the county, which is the red line compared to your population group average in the state. That's counties with a population between 50 and 100,000, seven counties in that group. And then also, the green line compares to all 100 counties in the state. And you can see you guys are trending in the right direction and are fairly consistent with your population group and the other counties. And the last chart deals with property tax collections. You can see from FY '16 to '17, the collection rate was fairly consistent. The property tax rate stayed the same, so revenues were similar in that case. And then for FY '18, of course, it's budgeted at the FY '16 collection rate, because that's the number that's available when you do the budget. And then, of course, with the slightly higher property tax rate, that's projected about a $2.5 million increase in revenue. So that's all I had. Thanks again for letting us be your auditor. We enjoyed it, and we hope we get to do it for a long time, and I'd be happy to take any questions anybody has.
Do we have any questions? So overall, for the public generally, I'd assume this is a good report.
It's a good report.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That's what we need to tell everybody.
Yeah.
If it is.
That's the Cliff Notes version of it. It's a good report.
Okay. All right.
I see one change. It's kind of a subtle change, that we're going to have to estimate liabilities as far as for the insurance purposes. We're going to have to come up with a number. Julie, are you comfortable with finding a number?
Yes, we actually pay an actuarial to do this on an annual basis, he mentioned. And what he's really referring to, we've been showing just the amount of the incremental increase every year, but next year, we're going to have to show the full amount. So we're going to be going from $2, $3, $4 million, probably up to close to $30 million. So it's going to be a huge additional amount sitting on the financial statements.
Right.
That's what he's warning you about.
And the key thing to note on that, it doesn't change anything about the county's plan, it's just the reporting changed for accounting standards.
I wonder why you have to do that. Is that something new?
It'll take effect in FY '18. They've implemented this standard incrementally over the past few years.
Who's they?
The Governmental Accounting Standards Board.
Okay. Is that the state or federal?
That is... That's a national organization. North Carolina piggybacks off them, so the LGC has... The LGC, which is who you guys are ultimately responsible for, uses their standards plus has some of their own as well. But at a minimum, you have to comply with the governmental audit and standards. So they've implemented that incrementally. A couple of years ago, the local government employees' retirement system pensioned the full liability for that, had to go on the books. The registered deeds pension then got added to the books. The law enforcement separation allowance got added to the books. The full actuarial liability of all those, which I think, if you go back to FY '13, none of those were on the books, so they've kind of come on gradually. And the other post-employment benefits or retiree healthcare is probably going to be the biggest number out of all those, and it's coming on last, so it'll have the biggest impact. But again, doesn't change anything about the county or their financial situation, it's just going to be in black and white now for people to see.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item on consent agenda is request approval of the November 20, 2017 regular meeting minutes. Does anyone have any changes, corrections, or deletions to those minutes? All right. If not, we'll move to request approval of budget amendments. Julie coming forward with a couple of budget amendments, and she'll present those.
Good morning.
Morning.
I have a couple of unusual budget amendments for you this morning. The first one is $10,000. This is a program, it's the Master Gardener Volunteer Association program that runs through the North Carolina State Cooperative Extension program we have on our county's books. And they are beginning to, well, actually be required from the state level, to show their revenues and expenses running through a county's books. We have never shown that before, so what I'm doing now is putting that in the budget. I've estimated $10,000 that they are going to be collecting and another $10,000 that they're going to be spending, so it's no county dollars in this. It's the Master Gardener's Volunteer Association program.
Commissioners, any questions? Julie? No. All right.
And the next one is a $16,000 appropriation. This was an oversight when we were putting the budget together last spring. We had budgeted $16,000 for the foster grandparents program, year after year after year, and somehow it got left out of the budget. And it's a program that needs to... We need to budget it, we need to spend some money on this, and so I'm putting that $16,000 that we pay to Mountain Projects, and from their perspective, it's a match for a grant. And I'm hitting contingency for this since we didn't have it budgeted originally, so that brings our contingency down to $70,750 after this $16,000.
This is a bit ongoing, just like you said, it was left out.
Yeah, it was just accidentally left out, is all I can figure.
How much do you say was in contingency? Seventy?
$70,750 is what's remaining after this $16,000 comes out.
Any more questions about that?
This is a good program. I had it in Medford. Excellent.
Very good program.
I had a question on the audit report that we just got. Do we have that available?
Yes, we...
That's not in this book?
It's not that book. It is not available yet. The local government commission is actually going to approve it, and once they approve it, then we'll give you all hard copies, and we'll have an electronic copy, and we'll have one on the county website. And the first part of what he was talking about was talking about the CAFER, and that's that thick book that has the pretty pictures that we have on the front that...
Is that something new? Because I thought we usually got that before.
We always hand it to you when we present it. But he said, when Travis mentioned, he said if we handed it out, he'd have to take it up, and I said, well, if you're going to have to take it up, let's just not hand it out until we have a final copy. And we talked about it, Kirk, when we were putting the agenda together, what we needed. So the important information is on that management report that was included in your agenda, but yeah, you'll definitely have a copy. And I can send you an electronic copy today. In fact, I'll do that. I'll send everybody an electronic copy.
I was just wondering, because that was out of the norm, what we usually do.
It is a little bit different, yeah.
When do you anticipate us getting hard copy?
Probably within the next couple of weeks.
Okay. And I'm going to put you on the spot, you know, we changed audit companies this time. How did this one go?
It went very well. We had... They came in a little bit earlier than we have been used to, so we weren't quite ready for them, so we were trying to get all of our books together and finalized while they were in there auditing, which was a little bit of a problem for a couple of weeks, but I think we're going to work on some rescheduling for next year, but it went very well.
Okay.
I was very happy with it.
So very comfortable with the change?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, yeah, I've been comfortable. I think they're very knowledgeable, and they did a good job. They pointed out some things to us that we hadn't looked at. They're a good group.
We've been with the other company for many years, and we changed, and, you know, I'm sure there's a couple bumps in the road, but overall, very...
Overall, it was great.
Very professional, very everything, yeah, because I was in one a long time ago on the school board when we changed, and it didn't work out very well, and we went right back, so...
Yeah, now, we had that happen to us, too, a few years ago. You might remember where we switched, and we did keep them for three years, but then we went back to Dixon Hughes, but this one, I think it's going to work out. It's going to work out fine.
Julie, I want to thank you and your staff for all the work you did for the audit. I know as long as I've been a commissioner, this has never been an issue as far as...
I hope not.
You guys always do a good job, and you get... The auditors are always real complimentary of you and your staff, and taxpayers should be thankful for that, that, you know, that's one thing as commissioners, we don't have to worry about our finances being improper and following the statutes and everything, so this commissioner just wants to say thanks.
Well, I appreciate it. I have an excellent staff, and, you know, it's a team process. It takes all of us.
Well, and then, you know, one other thing, too, I want to thank the staff and all the administration and everything, and then, you know, we continue to probably increase the financial stability of the county. I mean, you could see by the fund balance growing and stuff like that, yeah.
You can. And one thing to note also is the graph that you saw about the fund balance is really comparing the 2017 for the county to other counties' 2016. We don't have those numbers yet, we won't for another month or so. I suspect other counties' fund balances will increase, there won't be such a difference, but ours has gone up substantially. And I also want to mention, there's a couple of pieces of that fund balance that we really can't spend. The community college has about $1.8 million that's in our fund balance that's for their capital due to that sales tax, the sales tax that you all committed to their projects. And this year, we also had some leftover money from the school system's sales tax. It was about $800,000 that helped to increase that fund balance, and those two amounts are amounts that we don't truly have available to us to spend for what we need, but they're available to spend for schools' capital and community college capital in the future.
Any other questions? Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
After that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as has been presented.
So moved.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 And that passes unanimously. Next, we'll move to old business, request requiring board approval of contracts for services provided and/or materials furnished for any project over $20,000. Mr. Mashburn?
Mr. Chairman, about three meetings ago, the board had indicated that it had a desire to make some changes as to the approval authority that it granted as far as awarding contracts. And at that time, it was indicated that the board would like to cap the authority of the manager to approve contracts at an amount of $20,000 or less. So, we came back with recommended change to the budget ordinance because that's the specific piece of, or document that actually is the one that sets the cap. And so, we came back with recommendation of $20,000 as you had desired. But at that time, there was also another question that came up that was also included in the budget ordinance, and that was the fees that were charged by the solid waste, for solid waste tipping fees. I call it, there may be another name for it, but what they, at White Oak, when they take something there, the tipping fees that they charge there, it is specifically specified in the budget ordinance as to what the amount of those fees were gonna be. But it turns out that we also had in an agreement that the contractor that operates the landfill had the authority to deviate within a certain ranges of that. So, it was necessary to also change and take out of the budget ordinance those fees that were specified. So, what we've attempted to do here, and let me try to go over that with you. In the original budget ordinance, as it pertained to contracts, says the county manager or his designee is hereby authorized to execute the necessary agreements within funds included in the budget ordinance for the following purposes, and lists down several different items there. What we did was basically just in that section there, cap it at $20,000. After reviewing it, it was also felt that there was a need to change some additional wording, and to be specific, Section 5, the same section we're talking about, Item E talks about purchase of apparatus, supplies, and materials where formal bids are not required by law, and Item F talks about construction or repair work where formal bids are not required by law. And so, it was felt that the wording where formal bids are not required by law were redundant and confusing, since we had already capped the ability of the manager at $20,000. There was no need to have that wording in there. So, what you have before you would be a change from what we originally submitted. It still leaves it at $20,000, but it does remove from Item E and Item F the wording where formal bids are not required by law. So, that is, that's one of the things that is somewhat different from what we originally presented to you. But it doesn't change the cap of $20,000. The other thing is the fees that were charged at the White Oak landfill, it is felt that the best thing to do is to totally remove that entire section from the budget ordinance. Because again, you have authorized in the agreement with the vendor that they have some authority to set those within certain limits. So, given them that authority, conflicts with the budget ordinance, and so therefore, we need to take all of that section out, which begins under White Oak landfill commercial, which starts at $22.22 and ends with asbestos handling fees of $50. That entire section would be taken out of the budget ordinance. Doesn't do anything to change the agreement we have with the vendor for allowing them to set fees within certain limits, but it does make it, takes it out of the budget ordinance. I hope that's not confusing. I hope it explains what we're attempting to do here, but does accomplish the things that we've talked about.
Commissioners, have any questions? Okay.
I guess, Kirk, Mr. Chairman, do we, did we at some time give the vendor the authority to go within a certain amount of fee, or maybe, I don't know if somebody else can answer that or not, but maybe I wasn't a part in. But I know during the budget process, we did approve that, but as far as the vendor being able to set the amount that we charge, I just want to be clear on that.
And I need to apologize. I'm sorry, but I was not able to hear your question. So, I mean, the acoustics over here are really bad, and I could not understand your question.
I was just asking if we give the authority, or at some time, if the commissioners give the authority to the vendor in a contract to set those limits. I know that we approved it during our budget process, which I understand now that we want to take that out. But I just want to be clear on the amount that we give the vendor the approval to do that.
I'm not, I'm not exactly sure, and I'm looking around for David right now, is to see where.
Chris can probably answer that. Come on up, Chris.
I know that we raised it from $75, and, oh, Chris is here. Okay. I'll let Chris take and explain that one.
Morning. We entered into a management contract with Santec to operate the White Oak landfill. After a few years of that contract, we went into another section called expanded management. Once that contract entered expanded management, we gave authorities to Santec to set the fees for outside of the county waste coming in, whether it be Buncombe or Henderson, for C and D, for brush. The only thing we reserved the right under expanded management was for Haywood County-generated solid waste to be set at $22.45 a ton. They have the ability to adjust the other fees for special waste, whether it be sludge, construction debris, brush, some of the things that are not considered county-generated households, or household waste, county-generated.
Thank you, Chris. I remember us talking about that now, but, so it is for outside Haywood County.
Well, it would be.
It will be some of the inside stuff if it's.
If it's brush.
If it's C and D, or if it's brush, the only thing we reserved the specific cost for was the county-generated solid waste, which is typically your household solid waste. The definition of solid waste during the statutes specifically exempts things like sludge, brush, and construction debris.
Yeah, that's what initiated this thing, was the brush and the construction waste and stuff. They're actually having, you know, they pile it up for a period of time, and then they bring a contract in to have it ground so they can.
You know, use it, because they can't bury it. They can't put it in the landfill.
Can't bury it.
Yeah, but once it's ground up, they can, they can do something with it.
They use the vaults for ground cover.
Right. So, and, you know, that's additional cost, so that's where that came in. And, yeah.
And the sign has been posted that specifically states what the current rates are.
Right. And I think that's what we talked about last meeting.
We just wanted a clarification on it because, you know, it was a little confusing, and that's what we're doing, is clarifying it.
All right. Thank you, Chris.
Okay. So, just for final clarity, we don't control the cost for brush, sludge, and C and D. Santec controls that cost.
Those are, those are items that cost more to dispose of, and they have to have special, particular, you know, and so, that's why.
It's more expensive for them to dispose of it once they get it into the landfill.
Right.
Okay. All right. Any other questions about the budget ordinance, the amendments that we're going to make to the budget ordinance to come, to come into compliance, or at least with our request for contracts and our approval and review of contracts, if anything, over $20,000, and of course, removal of those fees that we just talked about? Okay? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve, and what we'll be doing, I suppose, here, and correct me if I'm wrong, approving the amendment to the budget ordinance for four-year 2017 through 18.
Correct.
Okay. I'll entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. And the main reason for the $20,000, I think, is to provide the public with information of the contracts that we're reviewing, also as a precautionary measure, so that we're reviewing it, and also so that we're advised of the interactions in the county and the contracts that are being undergone. All right. That is the only old business. First new business is request approval of wedding fireworks displays at Chestnut Ridge on December 30th, 2017. In December 31st, 2017, the approval continued on final approval that day by the fire marshal, who's with us today, Andrew Mashburn. Andrew?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Like you stated, our offices received requests from Chestnut Ridge for public fireworks display on December 30th and 31st. Just need your permission to continue.
Okay. Do we have anybody here this morning? Commissioners, have any questions of Andrew?
I guess, you know, we approved one earlier, and then we're coming back and approving these other two. But how did that one go? I mean, the last one, there was some controversy on the first one we approved, but now this, the one we approved that would just happen recently.
Certainly. That was November 18th, and we haven't heard anything in the way of complaints or anything from that. We went out that day and inspected the setup, and everything was fine. He told us, he had posted a sign at the end of his driveway notifying all the neighbors. He had posted it for about a week before, and we haven't heard anything since then. I don't know if any of you.
Do you know what time they went off?
He was told to do them before 10 o'clock. He was planning to do them sometime between 9:00 and 10:00, around 9:30 or so.
Okay.
And so, now, it's my understanding now that he has a sign that he posted indicating the date and the time of the fireworks, and then there is a location actually that the public could go to and park and watch the fireworks at that particular time?
I don't know that he has a designated place for the public to go watch, but from where they shoot them at, it's pretty well visible throughout the area, I would assume. I've never been there to actually watch the show, but.
All right. I think that's the case.
That's what he told me.
Because he has two different sites on his property that he shoots from, one up on the hill and one down towards the lower end by the road.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, have any other questions of Andrew regarding this request? I think the last time, we did make it before 10:00, the December 34th, of course, that's New Year's Eve.
He told me he was shooting these off at 6:30.
On New Year's Eve?
Yeah. The ones that were approved is will be shot off around 6:30.
Okay. He didn't make any, there wasn't any request for the December 31st to be later because of New Year's?
Like, there's gonna be plenty of people probably shooting off fireworks at midnight on December 31st.
That's why I wasn't going to make the requirement at 10:00 on December 31st, because I assumed that at 12:00, there'd be fireworks going off everywhere.
Yeah.
For a longer period of time than.
28 seconds, is that right?
Okay. Well, does anyone have any problem then approving the December 30th fireworks as long as they go off by 10:00, and then the December 31st?
I think also just the notification, that will be done as well, I assume, so.
All right. You have anything, Dad?
I don't, no, sir.
Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion that the fireworks for Chestnut Ridge be approved for December 31st, as long as they occur prior to 10:00, with approval of the fire marshal in the December 31st, 2017 fireworks, as long as they occur with the approval of the fire marshal. So, on the second one, I just withheld the 10:00 because of New Year's.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is request approval of resolution designated county manager position pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 18B-904F, to make recommendations or register objections to the ABC Commission concerning suitability of a person or a location for an ABC permit pursuant to the guidelines of the ABC Commission and the provision set forth in the resolution. Mr. Mashburn?
When, when we do receive a request for comments or recommendations on an ABC permit, it does, you do authorize someone to make those recommendations. And in the past, the last time you passed a resolution was in November of 16, and at that time, the resolution specifically stated that it would be the county manager, Ira Dove. So, if we received a permit, a request now to sign off on a permit, there was no one currently authorized to do that. And so, it was necessary to present a resolution to you. But in reviewing the statute on this, you can either name a person, or you can name a position. And my recommendation is that you name a position so that you don't have to do this every time there's a change. And so, that's how the resolution will read, is that it authorizes the, either the county manager or the interim county manager to be able to make recommendations and findings concerning an ABC permit.
Okay. Anyone have any questions about that? And this is, basically, the permits, any time someone requests an ABC permit, they want to sell beer or at their store, wine at their store, or they want to have a restaurant with alcohol, whatever, they have to get certain approvals with the ABC Commission, one of which is the governmental approval. And so, this would be our designation of the county manager, interim county manager, to give that governmental approval. All right. Then I'll entertain a motion that the county manager or interim county manager be the person or position allowed to approve ABC Commission permits pursuant to Section 18B-904F in pursuit to the request attachment.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? And I guess, I guess along, I'll amend that motion just to approve the resolution that we have here as the attachment.
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and that passes unanimously. Next is request approval for county manager. Let's see, if I got the right one. No, I don't. I've got the old one. Sorry about that. Request approval of current county pay grade and salary list to include the 1% cost of living adjustment from July 1st, 2017. So, we have Kathy McClure, our Human Resources Director, with us.
Good morning.
Morning, Kathy.
This is just to approve the 1% cost of living that was approved back in July 1st for anyone that was making $60,100 or less. We also did a little bit of other cleanup work on the salary grade listing. Part of that was to mirror the state pay plan that goes to Office of State Human Resources for a couple of the positions at Health and Human Services. And this is just basically cleanup work for the positions and to get your approval on this. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Hey, you all remember that we did increase the salary for those making, or gave them the 1% cost of living increase? Any questions of Kathy about that? All right. Now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the current county pay grade and salary listing to include the 1% cost of living adjustment from July 1st, 2017.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. And that passes unanimously. Kathy?
Thank you.
We appreciate you, and also, I appreciate all the good work. I've had to work with Kathy a lot closely over the last several months, and she's been a wealth of knowledge in the human resources position, and we appreciate you.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Appreciate your support, too.
Okay. Next is request approval of reappointments of Nancy Davis, Dorothy Morris, Stephanie Parkins, Cody Grassi, and appointments of Eddie Bryant and Deborah Reed to the Fairgrounds Board. Mr. Mashburn?
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing else to add. This is what's been recommended to the Board of County Commissioners, that these be approved as either reappointments or new appointments.
Okay.
Our board approved those. Our board approved those. There's just one caveat, is Nancy Davis is, had served her two terms, but we didn't have enough people to apply. So, she's going to serve until we find a replacement for her. She's also our treasure, and it would be detrimental for her to leave at this time, so that's the only thing out of the ordinary. But other than that, we've, I do have a good board. Let me just say that the Fairgrounds is, our manager is doing a super job out there. She, the events, she's almost got it booked, almost fully booked. I mean, it's hard to find a date if somebody wants to do an event there, because we've gotten a lot of, you know, she's really done a really good job. I guess that's all I'm trying to say, so. But, but the Fairgrounds, with our manager, and with this board, we seem to really be working well together at this time, and the Fairgrounds is going along in good shape.
Kevin, and they're advertising well, and billboards and stuff, so. I remember, especially the gun shop.
Yeah, she's, I don't understand social media, and she's got a good, a big influence on that, and advertising, so I guess that gets the word out, that people that participate in that, so it's, it's, you know, I'm, when we're looking at the numbers, in the past up till now, things are kind of like our county, but, you know, things are looking good, so I'm glad.
Okay. So, the Nancy Davis, Dorothy Morris, Stephanie Parkins, and Cody Grassi are reappointments, and then we have new appointments of Eddie Bryant and Deborah Reed, and all of those are approved by your board, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve those persons to the Fairgrounds Board.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And they are appointed. Next is request approval of 2018 holiday and meeting schedule. Does everyone had a chance to review the schedule?
Pretty well mirrors all the way we've done it in the past, so I have no problem with that.
Okay. So, we meet on Monday the 2nd, or Tuesday the 2nd? Is that right?
I mean, on Tuesdays in January.
Tuesdays in January. First two Tuesdays in January. Tuesday, September.
And that's after holidays on Mondays, like New Year's Days on Monday, Martin Luther King holidays on Monday, and then also Labor Days on Monday. And then we don't have the, they only have the one meeting in July. So, it's pretty well mirrors exactly what we've done in the past.
Okay. Any questions about that? Everybody else still okay with 5:30 and 9:00? Yep. All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2018 holiday and meeting schedule for the Haywood County Board of Commissioners.
So move.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Anyone else have anything for open session? If not, we'll move to closed session pursuant to the attorney-client privilege of North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A3.
So move.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're in closed session. All right. We are back from closed session, and we don't have any action to take after closed session, but does anyone have anything else for today's meeting? All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So move.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.